Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 27, 2016. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by vocal access programming. Is anyone here in the audience tonight recording the meeting? Seeing none. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and these are planning board members, please refrain from asking questions in regard to all matters without first being granted consent. First item on our agenda tonight, a quick public notice about boarding committee vacancies for the audience as well as the people watching at home. The planning board does have an opening right now for an alternate member now that Jason and John have joined as full members. Economic Development Committee in Auburn also has one vacancy and as does the Master Plan Committee, so if you're interested in getting involved and having this much fun, we encourage you to reach out to the town administration and get involved. First item on the agenda tonight is a 7:00 PM public hearing, the applicant Marie T. Baker requesting a special permit for a Hammerhead lot under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of a single-family dwelling at 310 Lester Street. Would the applicant please approach and address the board?
For the record, I'm Patrick Burke, civil engineer at HSP, Detective, and Deputy Advocate. Uh, Tim Baker's here. Uh, also Attorney Bruce Chris is here. We're here seeking a special permit to create a Hammerhead lot at 310 Lester Street. Site's about 14.7 acres off of Lester Street. Uh, there's an existing gravel driveway that comes down that serves an existing home here and the existing home, what we're gonna call Lot 1 once we break it out. Uh, we intend to break the site out into about a 2.9 acre lot here, 11.8 lot acre Hammerhead lot up in the rear, maintaining the existing gravel driveway to get to the rear of the site. There's wetlands located centrally on the site that we wanted to avoid. There's also a transmission line easement in the back that would restrict future development in the back here or to put house there. Done the purchase out here with the big gravel in the back here. We'll be proposing a single-family home, driveway coming off, the gravel drive from the back of the pros septic system, well water, there's electrical come off, the existing telephone poles in the back. Uh, we're just seeking to divide it up into two lots right here. We don't have any future plans to divide it up further.
Okay. So this is an application that has a bit of history with the board, so can you describe to us kinda how this proposal has changed from the last iterations that we've seen?
This was the original. Uh, I proposed we'd come in with a Hammerhead lot. We had also considered coming in with an A&R lot off of Real Way along here. Uh, we decided to go back to this to maintain the road as a private road with the driveway and maintain the gravel road coming up the drive.
Okay. Which had some legal issues, I believe, in the past, so I'm assuming Attorney Chris might be addressing them.
So we looked in at the invitation of the board, we looked into the possibility of withdrawing the application for special permit for a Hammerhead lot and instead advancing application for an A&R plan. Um, in order to do that, we spoke with town boards or town departments relative to what improvements might be required on the way if we were to do this as an A&R plan. Um, we've been reflecting on what might be a requirement for an A&R plan, we've abandoned that application, decided to pursue a special permit under the Auburn zoning bylaw for a Hammerhead lot. The lot as proposed is a, I guess, a classic definition of what a Hammerhead is with the 50 feet of frontage, much larger area in the back. This particular property has over 11 acres in land in the back. It's more than sufficient area within the 100-foot diameter, as you can see noted on the, on the plan for where the house would be built. Uh, all the criteria of the Auburn bylaw relative to Hammerhead design applies here and this is what meets it, textbook. So, uh, we've decided to advance our application for this special permit. I had prepared a brief memorandum, I would call it brief, but when I printed it up, I realized it's much longer than I thought, so you don't have to read this in, but it is my memorandum of fact in law that I believe would apply to a special permit application of this nature. So if I may submit that to the board tonight for your review, I'll give you a couple comments that you may wanna distribute.
So, so I think we can take that, the board's policies to not formally review things that haven't, weren't received until Thursday before the meeting. Um, so I probably suggest we give that to the town so they can fully review and kinda get their comments. Eric, do you, does the town have any comment on the application?
Just having received this, obviously we'll need time to review your letter, Attorney Kritzy. Uh, we appreciate the time that you put into that, so thank you. Some of the original concerns with this application, and I believe one of the reasons that, as far as we understood, the applicant was looking to move in the direction of an A&R, is that our bylaws do not allow for a, a common driveway for residential use. The driveway as it exists contains an easement to serve the lot in the back, and that is a non-conformity that exists prior to our zoning. I don't believe that it would be the purview of, of the board, the town, to look to increase that non-conformity. It would be a concern and I think something that we'd wanna look into. And we brought that up to the applicant. Um, we requested revisions of the plan to show a drive independent of the existing driveway, a layout that would show frontage on Lester Street and show access to the lot in the back.
The driveway where it is now, as you noted it is, Patrick indicated, there's a rather large swath of wetland right in the middle of the property. So the driveway already exists at that area, there is a crossing there. We wouldn't be, you know, we certainly wouldn't wanna put an independent or second crossing of the wetlands that would be able to, to that area. Um, we are not significantly increasing the density. This is one lot, this were to be designed as a subdivision, it would probably yield, you know, upwards of a half a dozen lots. And we said that, you know, with the special permit application and under the criteria of the Auburn zoning bylaw, it would only be, this would be the one bite of the apple, one develop, one lot. We wouldn't be seeking for any further development, we wouldn't be looking to, to put in the half a dozen lots that would otherwise be required. So that's why the application's here, that's the only place to really access the building area of this lot, and that's why we're looking to do this. Otherwise, it meets the criteria of almost textbook as to what this is, the function of the, of the Hammerhead design. Large back area, small frontage, it's a reduced frontage vehicle. Auburn should be proud that it has that vehicle available to property owners. Uh, and in this case, Ms. Baker seeks to avail herself of that opportunity. And that's why we're requesting this as one lot.
Okay. The board have comment? Everybody, start over here.
Well, the ideal Hammerhead would be if it was that long driveway coming off the street, but that also serves the other house and the existing easement. Did you go before, did I hear you speak once, that you were, the Highway Department or Highway Surveyor had town engineer had asked you or given you some regulations on how you could upgrade the road? Had you done any of that?
We met with them.
Oh, so you haven't done anything, like the widening that I read about?
It was widening the road, moving the poles, um, you know, paving the road, uh, and if those are the requirements that are gonna be there, we'd, we'd probably be seeking a lot more than one lot. It would probably, at, at the cost of paving, uh, how long is the road?
It's a, he wanted 20-foot wide paving with grindings for the A&R. Which, yeah, within the, within the access to, there's six or seven telephone poles.
He wanted it paved?
He wanted, 20 feet wide. 20 feet wide with grindings. Uh, that would also impact the wetlands in this area.
When you say with grindings, paved with grindings?
Yeah, asphalt grinding.
Right, I know what it is. He's not paved in asphalt, but pay, lay, grindings laid down and compacted?
Correct, yes.
Alright, that's different than asphalt, but, uh... But you haven't done any of that?
No.
And even with the grindings was?
The cost to do that for a single-family lot.
For the 800 feet by 20 wide, what did you take it to be?
Well, you know, we just...
Cause it's only about eight feet now. Eight to 10 feet at the best.
Probably about, about 10 feet. 20 feet wide is, is the width of pave for Lester Street. Lester Street's 20 feet, so it's basically building a, what is a public way to serve one lot. You know, with, and it, and it really is a driveway.
Was that condition on one lot, or, I mean?
There was, there would be a single lot A&R if I...
Right, but what I'm saying is, is did the Highway Department say to you, you know, whether you have one lot or 20 back there? This is what happens, needs to happen to the road?
That was for a single lot. If we said to them minimizing our potential development there?
To the one.
To one.
And they still said that they wanted a 20 feet wide?
20 feet.
With grindings?
Which requires moving the poles, which is, you know, very expensive, cause there is a large number of poles all the way down there. And it would require, uh, an impact on the wetlands, which means that we're going con con, uh, and we're dealing with, um, widening it in a very sensitive area.
Sure. Yep.
So he wants the 20 feet just for you to get what you're proposing to us for the Hammerhead?
Yeah, as, as an A&R.
As an A&R.
As an A&R.
So I guess...
As an A&R, but as the Hammerhead, he doesn't?
As a Hammerhead, I don't know that that's been discussed.
We didn't present.
So, you know, I think one of the things that may need to happen is, will likely need to happen is to have this go back kinda in its original form to town engineer, get his comments on this, um, and have him come back. Personally, I don't know what the rest of the board feels. I can understand the challenge over there, and for a single lot, you know, pending the town's guidance on that, I think I, I can understand having it be a shared driveway with some improvements, cause I think Wendy, you, I know, I drove down there, I know you did as well. The driveway as it is right now, I think it has some serious safety concerns. Um, so seeing some upgrades to that, I think would be prudent of the board to ask for, but I think personally, I'd be comfortable providing a little bit of, you know, levity on that if the, if the town recommended.
It's gotta have some kinda widening to some degree and for the truck, fire truck to get down here in an ambulance in a storm or something like that, cause it's, it's tight, I went down there.
It at least needs to be passable, for sure.
Needs some correction where that wetlands does cross, as I remember too.
This is called, look like it's...
It doesn't look, it looks like at some point the water just goes over the road.
Bear in mind that right now, there's only the one house being accessed and certainly, if we're not accessing the back land, it, it doesn't benefit us at all to go out and improve, you know, the driveway for that one house. Uh, anybody accessing that, if we're gonna build a house, we have to, practically speaking, we have to get there. So we have to improve that driveway to make it accessible, not just for a rent, but for the house. Um, and we have, as part of the building process, we'd have to do that, so...
Eric, do you?
Through the chair. One of the main issues and it's, it is coming up, and I don't wanna belabor the point, but one of the main issues behind the town engineer's request for the upgrades is emergency access. As it serves now, it's already an issue, you know? The idea of getting a fire truck up and back there to serve those homes in the case of emergency, to turn around and come out, it's already an issue. Putting another house back there, you know, that was the town engineer's opinion, that this just increases the liability, increases, um, you know, this issue, and our, our provisions clearly state that a Hammerhead lot must have adequate access to the billable portion of the proposed lot, access for emergency vehicles, fire, et cetera. It's clearly the intent of the bylaw to ensure that emergency access is, you know, is provided for. And without... I agree with you that town engineer perhaps should take a look at this, but without some improvement to this way, you know, whether we're calling it real drive, which your letter had previously stated and argued, you know, now we're calling it a driveway, with whatever the case is, I think it's, it's prudent for us to take a look at that driveway and come to an agreement on, on what standards would be, would be required for emergency access.
Can you show the picture that you, when you flipped it once again? So you're doing that as a Hammerhead off of the driveway that you're showing here in Brown?
Well, the Hammerhead is off of Lester, cause that frontage goes all the way down to Lester. That, that, the handle of the Ham, of the Hammer goes all the way to Lester.
Yeah, with the fancy foot wide handle there.
You're just bringing your drive, wanting to bring your driveway in?
The same place it is now.
The existing road?
Right.
Right, but I mean the driveway to the house?
Comes up that.
Yeah, it exists right here, so our driveway, the new driveway would be here.
And as far as density is, it, it's one lot. I mean, it's, it's, we play the cats, we dealt, and, you know, that's...
I think, I guess I'm comfortable conceptually with the, with that issue here. I think the issue is, is the access, which is untraditional from our bylaw. I think we're gonna need a little bit more guidance on it. John, do you need any comments? Jason?
You say it's a shared driveway?
There is a, there's a...
That's what this will be?
There's a driveway, the driveway's already servicing a house that actually has no frontage on anyway.
But you said, Eric, that's not in our bylaws either?
Correct.
So, and we...
As far as we...
That if it's not in the bylaws?
As far as we see it and we understand it, it would be no.
Right, but we can't even handle that anyway.
Is it in the bylaws, there's no common driveway?
The only reference to common driveways in our bylaw is in reference to non-residential uses. So anything that isn't referenced would be, you know, considered by omission, a denial of the use or, you know...
Is there any public comment on this? Alright, state your name and address.
Uh, Tim Baker.
Sure.
I'm the owner's son-in-law, and I've known the property going way back into the 70s. And the road has been in existence since 1925 and serviced three houses, or one was a trailer at the end of the road, and the house that was there now. And they, they've maintained it for all those years with no help from the town. Uh, it hasn't been gravelled in a few years. I know it needs upgrading, it needs, you know, some pruning, and it was serviceable to fire and the police. There was, the trailer burnt down and the fire department had no problem getting up the road and out. And, you know, we're just trying to separate the back land from the house, and we're asking for something that's reasonable and fair. And 20 feet, that's a two-lane highway. I mean, Lester Street's 20 feet. And originally, you know, when we talked to the board, they were saying 14 feet. Well, if, if we did 14 feet, we could keep the telephone poles. The telephone poles are in 20-foot right away, uh, and they're brand new, they just put them in last year. And, uh, to do all the work that the town is asking for, I think is, is really extreme. You know, I, I don't know any driveways like that where, in any other town where they request 20, 20 feet in, in a turnaround with an 80-foot radius, you know, to, to service two homes. So, uh, the other thing is that they mentioned like a new culvert. Well, that culvert doesn't, it doesn't work because the water doesn't drain that way. The water drains to the north, not to the south. They put the culvert in because it's low right there, but if, if you look on any of the topographic maps, the drainage goes to the north. So what's the need even for a culvert? There's one there and it's plugged up because it never runs in that direction. So, uh, we're just asking for something that's reasonable and, and fair, and we're not developers, we're not going in and subdividing the property and trying to get the maximum out of it. You know, we're just trying to get one additional lot that's tied to this excess land, and we're just asking the board to, to work with us.
So I think the, the 20-foot request, I think, was, came from the time in which you were trying to push this as a public, or a private way, in case that might be.
Well, even when they submitted the Hammerhead lot in the beginning, they were, you know, somebody asked, instead of 50 feet, they asked for 70 feet, and then the same issues came up. You know, and we want, you know, safe conditions too, but we think this is a little bit overburdened, you know, to ask for that.
We could improve the roadway too with the 14 feet as a conditional approval to update it and widen it.
Let's ask you what we request, if the board would, you know, consider that, would request it.
So you would say 14 feet?
14 feet.
To the side of the existing poles?
Correct, obviously.
So, so I think what I'd suggest is, um, then, application's kinda been around a couple of different times, but I think it's kinda prudent to have the town engineer take another look at it. Again, with the Hammerhead lot set, um, the concept that it would be a 14-foot wide way improved, um, and give us some guidance on kind of what would be acceptable. Doesn't sound like the board's opposed to being flexible as provided that it meets kind of the standard that all lots would be required to meet, so...
It needs to see something presented to us, and in one way or the other, you gotta address that call.
Yes. Is there anybody, any comment?
And you also have to think that if it doesn't pass, you don't have anything. So if they have, you have to expend some money to get the Hammerhead lot, which is in one of our provisions that we allow.
So, am I meant to a continuance to give time to allow town engineer to kinda re-review it in its current state?
Absolutely.
Make a motion to continue the hearing until their proposed date?
I heard you had thought what's reasonable.
Next month?
The first meeting in October?
It'd be either the 11th or, um...
19?
11th or the 25th.
Maybe the 11th? How's that sound? October 11th? I mean, you're just, you're gonna ask town engineer at 14 feet?
Just have town engineer?
Just for one lot?
Review the plan and give us some feedback on, you know, what kind of, the town's recommendations would be. Jason?
I still think we gotta look at that dual driveway bylaw thing, or I don't wanna move beyond something that we don't even have the power to override if that's an issue. It's not up to us.
You're looking at this time then to have an easement within the 50-foot entrance of frontage of the, in the handle of the Hammerhead lot?
We've already granted the easement to that purpose. I mean, that easement was created when that lot was counted out back in the 20s.
Correct.
And the fact is, they have an easement, that's actually what it is, it's not...
Like the part of what your 50, the 50 feet is, has that driveway on it?
That's correct.
We normally wouldn't, we would wanna a clean 50 feet wide for the...
That's where the driveway would be, so it's, it's the same, you know, it overlaps.
You see how it looks to us?
Our driveway overlays the same.
It's like it's now a common driveway, which we've done in the past, but we haven't done them at some point. I thought they had made a change, we had made a change in the bylaw, but we just omitted it by just not addressing it.
So, we've got a motion. Is there a second to continue?
Second.
John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay.
Thank you.
Just the managers, and we'll see you in a couple minutes.
In October. Thank you, thank you.
710 applicant Jimmy Georges, trustee of Prime Movers Trust, requesting special permit for their Hammerhead lot under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling at 12 Williams Street.
Welcome to the chairman, good evening. Todd Broder from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. Jimmy Georges here on my, my left, and Pat Burke's chair is already warmed up, and he's putting up the next plan for his next Hammerhead lot. So, last time we were before you on this application, we had a fair amount of dialogue about the provisions of the bylaw, and that you were gonna have some reflection potentially with town council. In the meantime, we had some reflection on our side and wanted to at least put up for consideration, uh, moving the location of the house into, uh, the Hammer section instead of out back. A lot of the concerns that were raised at the last hearing were approaching on the privacy of, of the neighbors and not having a, a home in their backyard, so to speak. And so that's precisely what we tried to do, is address that concern. As you can see on the plan that's up on the board now, um, as an alternative to what's already in front of you, um, if this was more palatable, the applicant would be amenable to moving that, that house up and so that it's essentially in line with the other houses in the neighborhood as far as distance from the road to the house.
So Todd?
Sure. That's okay, jump ahead.
The circle?
Yes.
You're gonna pull it out of, you suggest them pull it out of there and put it back. How wide is it where the brown is?
It's 50 feet there.
It's a P on here. We maintain the tempo setbacks on the side here.
As it gets close to the end of the lot where the white corner is there, is it a little wider, maybe close to 60?
Little bit closer. Gets wider up here, yep, we'll increase that.
So as some additional information, we provided a, kind of a mock-up of what the design of the house would look like. Pat, how many square feet?
Uh, 1675, the previous one was 1600, had a footprint of 1600 feet, so it's just a little bit smaller, a lot bigger than that.
This gives you the garage in the front and, you know, the house essentially, you know, in the back. Still provides to meet the setbacks, 10 feet side yard setbacks on the side, and will continue to do the landscaping along the property line with 16 Williams, and continue to do the swaling so that it pushes any of the water that we can control back towards the rear of our property. Takes away, you know, the impact on, on the neighbor on the other side, as far as, in the backyard anyway. So it's an alternative to the, to the plan that's in front of you. It was meant to address the concern of keeping in character with the existing neighborhood, and I think it does, from the perspective of where the distance from the road to the house, and essentially, you know, we go back to the lot size, this is .46 acres, so it's one, it's actually one of the larger lots in the neighborhood.
Okay. Eric, town have any comment?
The, as I'm sure the board is aware, but for the benefit of the public, the provision of the bylaw regarding special permits does allow for a house to be placed in the, in the handle of the Hammerhead if it's, um, if the board agrees that it would have less of an impact, impact on the neighborhood or the environment. So that would be the discretion, your discretion as a board to agree to such a design. Matt and I did do a review of the, how, the footprint size of the houses on Williams Street, and this is the first, you know, that I've heard the size, 1675, but it does fall within the range of house, um, at least the footprint, the range of the house size is on the street, just for your benefit to consider.
But it's a little un-traditional, but I think it's creative, I definitely think it would be more consistent with the character of the neighborhood, um, and from kinda what we had seen before, but, yep.
I'm reluctant that require variance.
I don't think so, I think it's kinda board discretion. Am I right?
Correct.
So, any other comments? From the board? Jason?
No, I mean that plan's definitely much more attractive. No, I mean, that plan is definitely much more attractive.
Ronnie?
Is there a reason why you couldn't move it that other further distance back, just so it's a little wider?
It's not, we can absolutely move it back as, uh, we thought, maintain...
What is that distance at the end?
Uh, back here?
Right, right about where the corner is.
From here to the, to the property line is 33, 34 feet.
No, I don't mean that one.
I mean...
The farthest part of the handle, at the top.
Further up into the handle.
Oh.
Right there, right where you just put your pen at the corner of that lot, what is the width there?
Oh, the width there is between about, probably about 58 feet.
So, we, we... It's 50 down where it is?
Yep, so we can slide it backward on the setbacks easily.
Then you start to lose the argument.
What we did, we, we kept the front of the house pen in line with the neighboring homes that are...
And the back? Back pretty much aligned with the further stuff to the right.
Okay. Um, any other board comment? Um, public comment, so?
Sure. Mark up a share, 16 Williams. I mean, I appreciate the design and, and what they're trying to achieve here. This certainly does address the hope being in somebody else's backyard situation. I'd like to hear how, you know, the impact on the ledge and the water in my basement, the increased water in my basement, the, you know, cracking of the veins, opening up veins as, as heavy machinery is, is addressing the driveway. Remember that ledge is up about, you know, three, three and a half, four feet where that driveway is proposed. Um, how that's going to impact my basement. And that's from the beginning been my biggest concern. Um, and there's really, I don't believe anything that they could say that would reduce my concern on the risk on my property, um, along those lines. Again, I appreciate the work and the creativity that's been done, but that too, in my mind, is, and it still doesn't address the water problems. Thank you.
Steve Paulina, the Townwood Street. My concerns would also be, at this point, um, I have some paper that I'd like to pass through the board with pictures of the road conditions as they now sit. It's, uh, as we said previously, when we were looking at the Google Earth, it was back to 2011. Um, that's in front of number three, which is the brand-new house that was just put up last year. Uh, John Ford isn't here tonight. But, uh, Bruce stating how, how the road, you know, was in disrepair at the time. And that's what it looks like now. On a, on a dry day, you've got that. And anything other than dry, you've got a, basically a swimming pool out in front of his house. And the whole road, it reflects the whole road being just crack upon crack and a patch here, a patch there. There's really been, uh, probably three shovels or four shovels full of, uh, coal ash that have been thrown on the road. And it's, uh, again, a filthy person that's going to have a, a house in, in stairs also. It's not, not an ethical situation. Uh, I guess I didn't say it is creative or is different. But the concerns would be at this point, you know, with the amount of machinery and stuff that's going down the road, it's going to make this horrific road even worse. Thank you.
Any other comments? Eric, can you quickly, kind of, we've been at this for a bit on this. I'm trying to remember one application to another. Is there a conversation at one point that this road was kind of, was going to be scheduled for repair in the near future?
I recall that.
Didn't we?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Just point of order, we, uh, the town engineer shows, uh, the road engineer was, was down speaking with John, uh, approximately just before the last meeting, the day of the last meeting, the day before the last meeting. He stated that the road is either a, he couldn't remember if it was a one or a two rating. He asked his assistant that was there, uh, doing the, it's just like an eight-inch difference from one side of his property to the other. At that particular point, the rest of it being humps and bubbles. And when we, uh, we were both outside discussing with him, when I asked him, uh, what it looked like as far as, you know, uh, being able to be repaired or when, when are we scheduled? And he said, well, it's a one or a two. Um, the best you could hope for is a possibility of it being brought up for appropriate money on, uh, in July of this coming year, which would mean that it would not be probably, it would not be, uh, able to be done until at least the following summer, which would be '18. And it, that's, he said, and that's barring any bridges, culverts, or other issues that come up. And if they do, they take precedent and the project would be put aside, you know, for...
Sure.
However many years it would take, it would just be put on the background. So, just, just so you have an idea.
Sure. Okay. Do a recommendation on how to proceed should the town engineer take another look at this? This is a new concept to us. We don't know, should we go back out for kind of a quick review?
The, the previous plan had met the town engineer's comments. It would, it's the board's purview to request an additional review for a revised plan. Would seem prudent to me, um, I'd say, given the drainage calfs too, with, uh, with the shift in, um, in the design. It's... It's the board's decision.
So, we have the drainage calculations reviewed and just be sure if...
Yeah, I mean, especially considering the concerns about the ledge and other things. It would be prudent to have it. That's John.
When you remove ledge like that on any project, you're within so many feet of the next dwelling. I believe you have to have a seismic wrap at each home on either side across the street. And you're only allowed so many feet per second of, of the noise, basically, when it gets to the seismic wrap. So, that has to be done.
Correct.
And that may give the gentleman that's in 16 a little more comfort, knowing that they're not just going in there...
Right.
I would assume they would hammer it out, not blast it. Which would be less than a blast.
Michael, do you have a...
Yeah, thank you for, so... Drainage is not really the concern. These gentlemen are smart. They know how to deal with drainage, right? So, not only do we have the same issue that we had before with the driveway cutting right into three and a half feet of ledge that goes directly into my basement, literally. But now you have a foundation on top of that same exact ledge instead of it being further back here. You have that foundation happening in that ledge. So, the possibility of opening up veins damage into the ledge is even greater. So, the engineer, they can do the greatest drainage calculation and please do. But really, that ledge is, that's the concern. That's the major, major concern. And I'd be hard for us to understand how they would do that calculation. Thank you.
Be amenable to continuance for final review by engineering and... Yeah, you, you did look at that previous plan. We've adjusted the location. We probably just want to double-check the, the drainage issue. So, we'll continue, we request a continuation to your next hearing, October 11th?
Just have one more question for the board through the chair. There was, to Michael's last comment, there, there was a short conversation about the idea of moving the house back into the handle. Is that, I'd be curious to hear where the, where the board leans on that.
Which one was that?
The board was...
You mentioning moving it back into the handle slightly.
Right, I guess the, we'd want the town engineer to review something that was closer to the final iteration.
Right.
Absolutely.
We're presenting this now in the alternative because we, we heard the concern, but we also, um, we'd like to hear other concerns. So, at the moment, we've got two plans. Correct. Board have comment on, on that, Ronnie?
You got the one with the, the house in the circle? And this one here that you presented? And I just thought that it would be a little better if it was further back, but I don't know. Cause still, um, I have a problem with it. To me, it's a circumvention of the frontage requirements when we allow it to go in the 50-foot handle. And what's to the left of that, Patrick? The brown house that you show now, where's the next house?
It's...
That's Mr. Fisher's house.
How many feet away is that?
About 35 feet, I believe.
Yeah, it's a 10-foot separate.
Close to 35 feet.
Well, you can, you can bring back whatever you want. You got that, those two, if you want to put another one, but...
Well, we've had the, I mean, to get to Eric's point, the town engineers reviewed the, the first one, as I'll call it. And the, the one presented here, he hasn't. It was 42 feet?
42 feet.
We could give him that third alternative plan, but I'm not sure I heard a lot of consensus that that was the best plan.
Well, I...
Yeah.
Good. I, you know, I, I mean, we had asked to keep more in conformance with the neighborhood. I think it's lined up nicely with the other houses. So, I'm of the opinion that I think for all intensive purposes that I prefer what I see there. But that's just my, my thoughts on that.
I agree. John, do you have additional comment?
I agree with that comment.
Correct.
You will be tied into the sewer, correct? On William Street?
Yes.
It's going to be all rock. That's where your water's going to go. Right down the sewer pipe, right into the sewer trench and wherever the sewer goes. Any water on the upstream side of that rock, once you go down through that ledge from the sewer pipe, you've just created a French drain. Cause the sewer pipe's surrounded by at least a foot of stone. 600, 600 over, if not a foot. That ties into the mains. You got to come all the way out to the street, get a road open permit to tie it in. That creates an additional underground drain.
So, are you saying, see if I understand, that, that may help the situation for Mr. Fisher?
It may dry them up altogether, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Okay, so, suggest we entertain a motion to continue to the next meeting, so engineering is... Oh, sorry. Yep.
Just one more question, one more situation. Um, in front of number 12 right now, there is a, a drain, some type of drain. And it angrily goes across the street to between number 11, yeah, number 11 and number 15. It kind of goes into nowhere. And every once in a while, the town will come up and they'll blow it out or they'll, I don't know what purpose it serves. And that could be addressed because there's another issue there. It doesn't really do anything. It's like a, it's like a drain lid or, you know, a grate.
Yeah.
There's a grate across the road at an angle, which...
It's probably just dry wells.
Yeah.
The existing issue on, on that property that you'd like to see the town...
That's a hollow on that, it's a hollow on that side. The hollow's on by number three. There's a hump in the middle by where I'm at, at number, at number 10. And it, it's, the road is kind of a, it's sort of dipsy-doo.
I'm sure Eric could try to connect you with the E W folks to try to get that...
Yeah, it hasn't been, it hasn't been an on-site thing where it's, it's a constant maintenance. It's just the once in a while, sometimes someone will just provide and just work into it. It fills up with dirt, fills up with, you know, debris and stuff from the, you know, from the year or the sand and stuff, so. Thank, thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
Make a motion to continue the hearing, October 11th? It's working, okay? Just October 11th?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, do you want these back?
No, but you have time here.
Give you one more form here.
Time, all right?
Yes, we'll, we'll have him sign this continuous form and it'll keep us safe. At least...
Wouldn't want you to get a construct.
At least from a constructive...
It's a special permit, you know, 90 days post-year, post-closure year.
May I still wait for...
Okay. So, yeah, so with 720 applicant Chow Lee, I think we can save some time because I think some of the folks are already at the table here. Um, requesting safe plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for construction of a commercial parking lot at 25 Wash Ave. So, turn it over to Mr. Fisher for that one as well.
Yep, again, Todd Brewer for the applicant, Chow Lee. Um, we have gotten back the bids for the, uh, peer review. Uh, we approved, um, the, the suggested bid from, from, from Matt and Eric. Dropped off the check today, so that should be able to get underway. So, we'd request a continuation. Hopefully by your next hearing, they'll have that done, maybe 11. We paid them enough so that they could get it done quickly.
Okay. Thursday before the meeting. Hope they have all acknowledged.
That would be great.
So, we make a motion to continue that hearing as well from October 11th?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just give you one.
Any additional content?
It's just become practice.
Seeing none?
If you want, I can...
Um, next meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
October 11th?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.